And this is Gavel to Gavel, WCBW TV's complete coverage of Richmond City Council. Good evening once again. I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of the month of July. We will have two meetings this month, and then if all goes as usual, we will take the month of August off. But we've got two meetings to go, and we've got a meeting to get underway here shortly, so let's take a look at what we've got. We've got 22 items on consent agenda, four items, or two items on the regular agenda, and that's going to change. So let's go through the agenda right now, and we'll let you know what is going to be happening. Let's get to item number one, first ordinance number 2011-159, amending the city code concerning submission of proposals pursuant to Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002. That is going to be continued until September 10th, our first meeting of the month of September. Item number two, ordinance 2012-16, amending the code for the purpose of establishing a citizen advisory commission on alternatives to incarceration, and that one looks like it's going to be continued until September 24th. Item three, ordinance 2012-100, this conditionally rezones 200 North 20th Street to the B5 Central Business District. That will be on the consent agenda. Item four, ordinance 2012-101, this is a special use permit of 310 and 3122 West Clay Street, and that is going to be continued until September 10th. Item number five, ordinance 2012-102, this closes its public use and travel portion of Virginia Street. This is located between East Carey and Exchange Alley, and that's conditioned upon dedication to the city of property for alley purposes. That will stay on consent agenda. Now, get to item number six, ordinance 2012-103, special use of 1315 Exchange Alley, 1320 East Carey Street, et cetera. This is going to be continued, it'll be amended first, and then continued until the 23rd of July. Item number seven, ordinance 2012-107, amending the pay plan to include the classification of social service worker and social service worker supervisor in the classified service. That one will be on consent agenda. Item number eight, amending the pay plan to include the classifications of surveillance officer, electronic monitoring program supervisor in the classified service. That will also stay on consent agenda tonight. Ordinance number nine, this is a public necessity to authorize the acquisition of 501 North 7th Street and 1310D East Canal Street for the purpose of public parking. What this is, it's a consolidation of the parking decks and the control of parking decks reverting to the city. So that one stays on consent, as does item number 10, ordinance 2012-140, and that'll be a temporary easement, authorizing an acquisition of 2819 Richmond River Turnpike for the purpose of allowing temporary access and use of the property. This is for Phase Two of the Cannon Creek Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail. That stays on consent, as does number 11, Resolution 2012-R69. This adopts an RVA Green Roadmap to Sustainability as the sustainability plan for the city. That is staying on consent. Now, item number 12, and this is Mr. Hilbert's, Resolution 2012-R81, and it says, "Expressing the city's council's profound disappointment in the House of Delegates of the General Assembly of Virginia for its rejection of the nomination of Tracy Thorn Begland to a judgeship on the General District Court." This is going to be continued until the 23rd of July, and there is a possibility, Ms. Hilbert said this paper, may end up being withdrawn. Now, the next items on consent agenda, they are all going to be appointments or reappointments. Item 13, appoints David Lidyard, member of the Richmond Public Library Board. That stays. Item 14, Resolution 2012-R91, and this will appoint Joshua Builder as a member of the Commission of the Architectural Review. That's going to be continued for two weeks, so that one will not be heard tonight. Item 15, Jennifer Inez-Wimmer, member of the Commission of Architectural Review. Then we have item 16, Brenda Drew, member of the State Board of Community Colleges for J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. Item 17, Randal Edwards, State Board of Community Colleges for J. Sergeant Reynolds. Item 18, and this will appoint James McAllister, member of the Board of Fire Appeals. Item 19, Daisy Weaver, member of the Richmond Library Board. Item 20, Krista Miller, member of the Richmond Library Board. Item 21, reappointing Mary Jo Joseph as a member of the Personnel Board of the City of Richmond. And 22 is appointing Fay R. Howard as a member of the Sister Cities Commission. Those items will all stay on the consent agenda, and as you know, those will be taken up the very first thing in the meeting. Now, on the regular agenda, we've only got two items, and when we get done, we'll only have one item. Item 23 is ordinance 2012-29, and this is a special use of 122 Tempsford Lane for the purpose of authorizing an additional lot to be served by private access easement. That's going to be continued until the 23rd of July. And item 24, this is Mayor Jones by request, this is a rezoning of 5817 Bliley Road, 5619 and 5625 Forest Hill Avenue, 1664 and 1664 Alimic Drive will go to our sixth, single-family attached residential district. And those are, that's the only item we'll have on the regular agenda tonight. So we will have some expedited consideration papers, and we'll get to those in just a second, because right now, we have nine appointments and reappointments. We have six consent agenda items and one regular agenda item. How did we get there? Well, one appointment continued, five consent agenda items continued, and one regular agenda item is continued. Now, we've just been given some expedited consideration papers. One of them will be approving an expenditure of $3,500 from council district funds for the 7th District to make a gift to the Fan Free Clinic for Sister Speak Camp Program. One will be approving an expenditure in the amount of $2,000 from council district funds for the 7th District to make a donation to the East District Family Resource Center for the annual Camp Diva Date with Dad and Dinner and Dance Program. And then we'll have the amendments to ordinance 2012-103, and that paper will be amended and then continued. Citizens' comment period tonight, we have five people signed up. Rodrick Bullock to speak on city issues, Teddy Perham to talk about a stolen vehicle, William Howard, tax relief for the elderly, Benoni Tony Yamakudzie on city issues, and Scott Berger on water rates. Then on the formal awards and recognitions docket, there'll be an official recognition to Virginia Commonwealth University Institute for Contemporary Art. And this officially recognizes VCU for its efforts in the construction of a facility for a new Virginia Commonwealth University Institute for Contemporary Art. That'll be presented tonight. And then one, well, we had hoped never to have this happen, but it's a recognition of Ruby Ethel Giles Turner. And if you have not heard, we lost Ms. Turner this past weekend. She was the smiling face you always saw in the first or second row behind the Speaker's dais in the Richmond City Council chambers, and she has been sitting there and smiling there for more years than I can remember, and very seldom spoke, but when she did, it was always something very constructive and never vicious, always saying, "Well, I really appreciate what you're doing, and I'd like to see us do more," kind of thing. But Ms. Turner passed away this past weekend, and her daughter will be here tonight, Reverend Eunice Wallace Duncan. And the award will officially recognize, honor, celebrate, and remember as Ruby Ethel Giles Turner, and brings her lifelong dedication to public government and community service to the attention of all our grateful residents, for her commitment to helping make Richmond our nation an even better place to live, work, learn, love, play, visit, and raise a family. So Ms. Turner will be missed. I'm sure she's looking down on us right now, and probably knowing her, is probably saying, "Why are they making all this fuss? I just did what I thought I should do." So that'll be part of tonight's agenda as well. So we'll be getting started in just a few minutes with tonight's Richmond City Council meeting. I'm Dick Harmon. Stay tuned.
I'd like to ask council members to take their seats, please. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting will now come to order. At this time, we will stand, and the invocation will be given by the Reverend Andrew Terry, Assistant Pastor at Richmond Hill, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. Lord God, you have made each of us as stewards of this your city, of its gifts, land, and resources. Bless this city council in their work this evening as our representative stewards. Give them ears to hear your voice, the voice of your people, and each other's voices clearly, and grant them wisdom in their deliberation and decisions. Lord God, you have a dream for this city, of unity in our diversity, of health, vibrancy, and justice. Help us to be good stewards of that dream. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chamber emergency evacuation plan announcement will now be given by the clerk.
Madam President, for the record, council evacuation plan is as follows. Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left and right, front of the council chambers, or the east and west stairwell outside the rear doors of the chambers. Do not use the elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot boarded by Clay, 8th and 9th Street. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are all the members of council in attendance this evening?
Yes. Madam President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the appointments and reappointments on tonight's agenda? And when your name is called, will you please stand so we can tell that you're here? And after the vote has been taken, if you would go to the rear of the chamber on my left, the Assistant City Clerk will be there, and she will direct you from there and administer the oath of office.
David Lidyard. Being appointed as a member of the Richmond Public Library Board. Joshua Builder, as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review.
I believe that's being continued.
Okay. Jennifer Inez-Wimmer, as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review. Brenda, Dr. Bren-
That's a reappointment, so she doesn't need to be here. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk, sorry.
Okay.
I think you're up to Brenda Drew.
Randal. Dr. Drew, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, number 16.
Number 16, Dr. Brenda J. Drew, as a member of the State Board of Community Colleges for J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. To reappoint Randal E. Edwards, as a member of the State Board of Community Colleges for J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College. To appoint James A. McAllister, as a member of the Board of Fire Appeals. To appoint Daisy E. Weaver, as a member of the Richmond Public Library Board. To appoint Krista Milliard, as a member of the Richmond Public Library Board. To reappoint Mary Jo Joseph, as a member of the Personnel Board of the City of Richmond. And to appoint Fay R. Howard, as a member of the Sister Cities Commission. Okay, that covers all of the appointments and reappointments.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, at this time, are there any persons that wish to speak in favor of any of these papers? In opposition? Back to council for discussion.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Unless I missed it, several persons for appointment did not stand. Did we make proper record of those?
Correct. I was going to ask the clerk, go through that with the clerk. I believe that, was Jennifer Wimmer here?
That was a reappointment.
That's a reappointment, okay. That's the one I was looking at, okay. David Lidyard, is he here? Okay, that paper needs to be continued. And also, I believe the other one was... I don't see anybody standing for that one. Is Fay Fay Howard here? Okay, that needs to be continued also, Mr. Clerk.
Krista Miller. He's here. I missed her.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, why don't you read, we're voting on number 15, number 16, number 17, number 18, number 19, number 20, and number 21. Correct?
Correct. They call for who?
Yeah, please call the vote, Mr. Clerk.
The council is voting on the appointment and reappointments, as read. Okay, Mr. Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert.
Aye.
Madam Vice President, Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Jewell.
Aye.
Mrs. Newbill.
Aye.
Mrs. Trammell.
Aye.
Mr. Tyler.
Aye.
And Madam President, Graziano.
Aye.
This paper is passed with all ayes and no nays.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, would you please call the list of speakers for awards and presentations period.
Okay, the first ward, presented by Councilmember Connor and Councilmember, Madam President, Graziano, Ms. Ruby Ethel Giles Turner, to officially recognize, honor, and celebrate and remember Ms. Ruby Ethel Giles Turner, and bring her lifelong dedication to public government and community service to the attention of all grateful residents, for her commitment to helping make Richmond and our nation an even better place to live, work, learn, play, love, and visit- an even better place to live, work, learn, play, love, and visit and raise a family.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, would her family please come forward? And first, I would like to offer our condolences for your loss, but for a major loss to the city. And I have to tell you that as I was standing there doing the Pledge Allegiance, I didn't hear Ruby's voice. Whenever you have the Pledge of Allegiance, you hear Ruby's voice above the entire crowd. We are really, really gonna miss her. She gave so much to this community.
Yes.
And you, her family, gave her up to this community and let her give us the time that she spent with us, and we really appreciate it. And I'm gonna let Mr. Connor say some nice words because Ruby was his constituent, and I know he has some very nice things to say.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate your thoughts, the family, the kind thoughts that you have. Ruby was very special to me. Ruby really made her mark in the city of Richmond. I mean, she not only came down here, made her mark, but people in the viewing audience, as the President said, she'd always hear her there, always. She was, she was a regular landmark here, you know? One of the things I would, I would like to, to say for, for a fact, that she was really involved with the Police Department in law enforcement. I know for a fact that, of course, on many occasions, I would go over to her invitation, and she would have everybody there, from the surrounding counties, she would have had all the law enforcement people. I met a lot of folks since I met Ruby, you know? She was instrumental. She was a dear person, very, 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 very dear person, you know? And I know that, and she was a very religious person as well. And I know the Lord had a place ready for her for a long time, and she's there now, you know? There's no doubt in my mind about that. And while Ruby was here, she was a sweetheart. Now, she's an angel. I, I loved the lady, she was real sweet. You know, we would talk after council, she would, we would always end the conversation, and I'd get ready to walk away, and she said, "And how is Mrs.?" She always said that. I never could walk away without her asking to do that. If I ever thought about divorce, I couldn't face her down, you know what I mean? She was, she had that much of an impact, and I'm sure you all felt the same way. But she, she was as good as she could be. And I, and I know for a fact that one time when she was sick, that Governor McDonald went over to see her in the hospital. So she was very, very instrumental. And one of the things I'll, I'll, I'll miss from her, you know, she'd always say, like Governor Powell said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," right? She always said that, and we'll certainly miss that. So I just want to thank you for, for lending her to us and giving her up to the Lord. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all so very much. On behalf of my family, my brother and I, along with the rest of our supporting family here that are with us today, would like to thank the council for your honoring my mother. I know when I was calling her, she would always say, "Oh, I was at the city council and da-da-da-da-da." And I just thank God that she enjoyed what she did. And she never tired, she always said, "I need to be able to do something else." And I just want to thank you all for extending the honor to her at this time.
Madam President, the next award being presented by councilmembers Samuels and President Graziano goes to Virginia Commonwealth University Institute for Contemporary Art. To officially recognize Virginia Commonwealth University for its efforts in the construction of a facility for a new Virginia Commonwealth University Institute for Contemporary Art.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And please, come up. This is so exciting for me, for Mr. Samuels, but for the whole city. It's exciting because VCU is such an integral part of the revitalization of our city, and it's exciting to have this wonderful art building on Broad Street. We are, I'm so jealous because it's in Charles's district, but I guess you couldn't put one on Yugenot Road, that's out of the question, huh? So we have to go with Broad Street. But what you have, what you and your department have done for this city is, is really more than one can imagine because when, 20 years ago, when you went down Broad Street, it had a very different look, and a very different feel than it does today. And even though you didn't start it, First Fridays, Richmond being an art city, that's very attributable, attributed to VCU, and we thank you for that. And I'm gonna let you all say a few words.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the cornerstone for the next 50 years in the city of Richmond. I'll tell you why. Richmond is poised to become one of the great arts cities, not just viewing art, but participatory art, et cetera. This building contains both those features, both spaces for participation in art and for viewing contemporary art. The thing that hit me the most about this project, apart from its huge impact on the gateway intersection of Broad and Belvedere, is that there's gonna be two doors to it. Neither one a front door, one opening onto essentially the VCU campus, and one opening out to the city of Richmond. And I think that helps explain why so many VCU students love staying in Richmond, because they've had an opportunity through VCU to grow to love the city that, that is home to their school. I want to thank you all very much for that. This is an environmentally friendly project, this is a jobs creator, and those are things in this day and age will set the tone for future buildings in and around Richmond. I know that you've got a lot more to say, but I want to thank you and congratulate VCU Dean on all the work that you guys have done making VCU the national treasure that it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Graziano and Vice President Robertson, thank you so much, members of council. I really appreciate your recognizing us with this tonight. This is very important, and I want to echo Councilman Samuel's thoughts about how we think this will change the city of Richmond. We sit right, the Institute for Contemporary Art, which is designed by an architect named Stephen Hall, who just recently won the highest award given by the American Institute of Architects, the gold medal. And that building, while it sits on the corner of Belvedere and Broad, I think stands for many things in the city, including metaphorically how it can help bring the city together. It sits at the corner of Carver, Jackson Ward, the Arts District, VCU, and what an opportunity we have there to make the city a better place, bringing culture and cross-cultural experiences to everyone in the neighborhood. The corner itself, I think, is one of the, if not the most, one of the most traveled corners in the city, so anybody coming off of 95 and 64 on Belvedere Street will have a game-changing look when they come across this building. 65-foot-tall building, striking building illuminated on all sides. It will have, it has four galleries, 38,000 square feet, a performance space, as you mentioned, cafe, and it will have a cinema tech and a sculpture garden where people will be invited in. There are no walls around this building. This building is for VCU to come out and show our great creative energy to the city of Richmond and bring people in from all over the world to enhance the cultural opportunities in this region. And we thank you very much and are humbled by this, and thank you very much for giving us this recognition.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Good to see you, gentlemen.
Madam Clerk, those are all of the awards and presentations for this evening. Madam Clerk, I also want to make a note that, President, President, Mad, Madam President, I'm sorry, Madam President, also want to make note that Mr. David L. Liddyard is present? Is that true? Mr. Liddyard? Okay.
Okay.
So we do not need to continue that paper.
All right, well, we'll hear that paper right now. Is there, if you'd just stand for a minute? Thank you. And you could sit after the vote, if you could go to the back of the chamber. The clerk will show you where to go to be sworn in. And thank you for your service. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of this appointment? In opposition? Back to council for discussion. Call the question, Mr. Clerk.
Council members are voting on the appointment of David Liddyard as a member of the Richmond Public Library Board. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels? Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Madam, Madam Vice President Roberts?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Mrs. Newbill?
Aye.
Mrs. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Madam President Graziano?
Aye.
Okay, we have eight ayes, and Mr. Samuels stepped away. Okay, this paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And if you would just go to the back, you'd be directed. Thank you very much, and again, thanks for volunteering to serve. And before we go to the Agenda Review and Amendments, Mr. Clerk, we have a shout-out to the Richmond Department of Procurement Services. I would like anybody that's here from Procurement, stand up, we're gonna shout you out. Here we go. All right. First we, first we clap, then we tell you why we're clapping. Okay, we would like to announce that last month, on June 4th, Richmond Department of Procurement Services received a Certificate of Achievement of OA for accreditation by the National Institute of the Government Purchasing Organization. The Richmond Department of Procurement Services is one of the 116 of 2,400 government departments that are members of that group to achieve this distinction. Again, congratulations. And all of council, thanks you for your very hard work, we appreciate it. Okay, at this time, Mr. Clerk, we have the review, could we please review the list of amendments to tonight's agenda?
Okay, we have item number one, ordinance number 2011-159, continued till September the 10th. Number two, ordinance number 2012-16, continue until September the 24th. Number four, ordinance number 2012-101, continue to September the 10th. Ordinance number 2012-103, to be amended and continued to July the 23rd or later on this evening. And ordinance number 12, Resolution number 2012-R81, to be amended and continued until July the 23rd. Resolution number 2012-R91, to be amended and continued until July the 23rd.
Now, that's amended, that's unamended.
And that's it.
And on the regular, on, yeah, actually...
And, I'm sorry, ma'am, I left out one, Resolution number 2012-R99, to be continued.
Okay. And then on the regular agenda?
On the regular agenda, ordinance number 2012-29, to be amended and continued to July the 23rd. Okay.
As, as amended, we're not amending that tonight, correct?
Yeah.
No.
Madam, Madam President, that's just a continuation.
Right. Okay. Does any member of council have additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Okay. Need a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Motion to accept the amendment. Mr. Connor, will you make that motion, please?
So, so Mr. Clerk?
Call for vote? Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Madam Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Mr. New, Mrs. Newbill?
Aye.
Mrs. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
And Madam President Graziano?
Aye.
Okay. The amendment has been accepted, nine ayes and no nays.
Okay. And so before, we have before us the regular agenda? And I believe we have just one paper on the regular agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. On the regular agenda, ordinance number 2012-86, to conditionally rezone 5817 Blyley Road and other addresses that are listed to the family, to the single-family attached residential district.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And I'll just say a few words about this before I open it up. I went to planning, this, this is a project that has been in the works for about three years. It's, they're townhomes, 59 townhomes. They're located in an area that has single-family residences as well as apartments. The area is Zoned R3. This zoning is more dense than the R3, but because of this request for the zoning change, the neighborhood, neighborhood has been guaranteed some proffers from this developer. The, it has only, I believe, eight front-loaded, eight front-loaded, 18 front-loaded garages of those units. The street trees, the lighting, alleyways, all have been proffered by the developer. And I am going to support this. This has already, also been supported by the area's homeowners association. So at that, I'm gonna open it up. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
I'm attempting to get a point of order at how the public didn't comment on the consent agenda.
We didn't do the consent agenda yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, members of council, my name is Jim Theobald. I'm here this evening on behalf of Hope Equity LLC, which owns this 10-acre tract at Forest Hill in Blyley. And I will try to be brief. We did meet with the Forest Hill Blyley Road Neighborhood Association, they've provided a letter of support. We met with the Westlake Association neighbors who indicated that they were not opposed. We discussed the matter with the representatives of the Westover Hills Neighborhood Association. They have also given a letter of support, and also have emails in the file from the owners of Willow Oaks Apartments and Match Point Apartments supporting the request. It's a well-proffered case, and our vision is expressed by our concept plan, the elevations, and our many, many proffered conditions. This case, I believe, is right on the merits. We're creating a neighborhood where young professionals and empty nesters alike can live, interact with one another in a low-maintenance environment. It includes street trees, front porches, 38% of the site in green space, and brings these new residents and vitality and tax revenue to this infill site. It represents over a $12 million investment at this location, and conservatively, conservatively will generate over $142,000 in real estate taxes. Promotes one of the bigger goals in your master plan by promoting affordable home and... Promotes one of the bigger goals in your master plan by promoting affordable home ownership. We do have significant support from neighbors. I believe this is a much better choice than the existing unrestricted R3 zoning. We've created a community, not a subdivision, and have been recommended for approval by your planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this paper?
Good evening, Honorable City Council President, Katia Graziano, Honorable City Council Vice President, Elaine Robertson, and all honorable members of the city council. This is Benoni Tony Amakuj. Is anybody also here called Benoni Tony Amakuj? The person should come and challenge me here before you are stealing my letters and my property and manage. Now, the issue is, I want to ask a clarification, Honorable City Council President. Before there is a rezoning, it means that the area has...
Your time is up. Thank you.
No. Is it fine?
No. No, that was not right. That was not right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But I want you, but I do want you to stick to the paper, okay?
Right.
Stick to that.
All that I wanted to know is that before there is a rezoning, the area already has been zoned for a purpose. I want to know what kind of purpose it was zoned before you announce rezoning to another residential area. That is all that I wanted to be clarified, for us to have a better understanding so that we can make a meaningful contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for being patient with us. Anyone else to speak in favor? Back to counsel for discussion. Call the question, Mr... Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Amakuj's question deserves an answer. He may have missed it in its reading, but it says, it's being zoned from its original R3 single-family residential district and to R5C single-family residential district, which is conditional. The conditions, I suspect, has a lot to do with the profits that have been offered and that have been satisfied. But I think it allows for greater density versus less density. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's not just Mr. Amakuj who doesn't understand all this zoning jibber-jabber. I'm another one, so I join the crowd, Mr. Amakuj. And I'm sure that people out in the audience might need a little help following this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Other discussion? Please call the question, Mr. Clark.
Madam President, counsel is voting on the regular agenda item number 2012-86. Mr. Connors?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Madam Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Mrs. Newbill?
Aye.
Mrs. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Madam President Graziano?
Aye.
Okay, that paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. At this time, do we have any papers to amend and continue? You don't have the amendments yet? Okay. All right, so at this time, we'll come back to that, Mr. Clark. Okay, could we please call for the citizen comment period?
The first speaker tonight is Theodore Palm.
What happened, Gerard? And that's Theodora.
Theodore.
You may call me Teddy. Look, I'm here tonight about another serious issue about my vehicle that was stolen in June of last year, and I have some paperwork that I'd like to pass around to you guys. My vehicle was put in the shop because I'm getting old. I'm tired of getting on the ground, changing oil and transmission fluid. I decided to take it to the shop because I had always worked on my own. Carried it to the shop, 133P East Bell Boulevard, next to the police station, and it was on the lot with nine other vehicles. The guy says to me, "We can fix it, leave it." And I asked him about the decals. They ran out the next day. So I put the new decals on, and he gave me the razor to scratch it off, and lo and behold, he said, "Come back Monday, we'll have it ready." I called Monday, no answer. Called Tuesday, no answer. Called Wednesday, I got on the bus from Howland Park, went to South Side Plaza, walked up Bell Boulevard, and my car, along with the other nine cars, were gone. Now, how do you reward a good driver? I have been driving over 50 years, haven't had a ticket in 40 years, no suspensions, but this guy stole my van. I called Seabirds, they didn't have it. I called the police tow lot, they didn't have it. So by me being a tom girl, I worked at the junkyards, I called around, and I found out that my car, my van with the air conditioning and the tinted windows had been taken over to Sims Metals, used to be Pex. And this white boy was standing there with a picture of my van. He had a false title. They crushed my van, and I have been waiting for a whole freaking year for the police to get this thing in court. They drug the case all the way through a year now. I went in on May the 1st. White boy stood up and admitted he had stolen my vehicle along with these other vehicles. How did he get bond? He was a white boy. Y'all need to start treating people differently in this city. People are getting tired of discrimination. The judge says to me in court, "We're going to give you $1,000." And I say, "What? For my van, rust-free, air-conditioned, tinted windows, where am I going to find a van like that for my health? I've had five heart attacks and a stroke, I'm not ashamed to tell you. I was brutally beaten by Deputy Sheriff Kevin Ferguson in uniform. Pepper sprayed in my face as I stood outside waiting with some elderly friends. We were going to brunch and jazz. I'm a musician. That sucker sprayed me, double-thrust punched me in my chest like Bruce Lee, knocked my bony tail clean over there to that camera, and he never got a day. They hid it, I never got a dollar, and I want to know why the police are telling me since my license, they have suspended my license, put a $700 fine on me. I've been waiting for DMV to send me paperwork. They never sent me a notice. My time is not up. I'm walking, boo. You get over it." I say this, they have suspended my license, had a $700 fine on it, and they are telling me that I cannot...
Palm, there's somebody in the back that can help you, Cecilia Garner?
I just want the people in the city of Richmond to know that DMV does not send out... Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Palm, that's it. Should we call a recess? Or just let her go? No, come on. Ms. Palm, Ms. Palm, you're going to have to... Ms. Palm, Ms. Palm, your time is up. You're going to have to, you're going to have to sit down. Okay, we're going to get her out. Yeah, all right, let's call a five-minute recess. Hey, we're calling a five-minute recess.
Madam Clerk, would you call the next speaker? I mean, Mr. Clark.
I know, I make that...
I need a sign up here that says "Mr."
I know, I tell you, it's been one of those nights. The next speaker is William Howard.
Is it on? Try again. Is it on for sure? Talk into the mic, sir, let's make sure it's on. Could you talk into the mic? You don't have to touch anything, just say something.
It's on.
Okay. We're glad you're here.
Members of counsel, ladies and gentlemen, my name is William Howard. I live 724 North First Street in the city of Richmond, the 2nd District. I own my home. I paid for that home years ago. And I noticed that since we had this new mayor, that my tax exemption for the elderly has been removed. And I've been working, trying to get... It started again, and I haven't got it, not since this mayor that we have now been in there. And I notice he's... Because I still watch what goes on down here. I watch it every night, all day. And I noticed that the mayor's been stealing my money. And I don't mind saying it, because I got box of evidence of it. I have a paper right here. And the only person that I see that realizes what has been happening to me is Ms. Trammell. And I'm here tonight to push this HR 44115, which was made legal today in Washington, DC. Because tomorrow, I got to go over to McGuire's, and I had my children all on this, my grandchildren and everybody. And this mayor's been stealing my money, having me pay $200 and something dollars every month for something that, and got it jacked up, where I was $2,000 behind that, he said. And he puts on now what he calls the mayor's supper. He sent somebody out to my house last month to fix my water. I found that that guy come out there with the story.
You have 30 seconds. Please begin to sound right.
Well, I think that the only person that sees what's going on is Ms. Trammell. And I'm here to push to see that Ms. Trammell become the next mayor of the city of Richmond.
Thank you, sir.
I go for them. Thank you very much.
If you're having trouble with tax relief for the...
Ma'am, no, ma'am, I don't get my tax exemption for the elderly.
I'm going to send you to a lady in the back of the room who can help you with that. Her name is...
I was told at the last...
Garner?
Madam President.
She can help you with your tax relief. Yes, ma'am?
Madam President. Mr. Howard, you are so right.
I don't trust nobody else.
William, let me tell you, William. Sir, let me tell you...
I trust Ms. Trammell.
Let me tell you, yes, you and I have been...
Yes, you know what's happening.
Yes, sir. And Madam President, I'm going to say this right now. I think it is a shame that our seniors, not only him, but others, some of them in my district, and we're going through it right now, where I helped one of my neighbors who's not able to read and write poorly. I helped her with that form, put the stamp on it, and I know she mailed it. They are denying her her tax relief, saying they didn't get it. Got a few more in our 8th district, and I know that Ms. Parker's been trying to help them with it to find exactly what's done happened, because they have been denied. And now they are trying to find the money, can't find the money, don't have the money, and they have been disqualified because they said they didn't get their letters. I said, I think this council needs to relook at that, because if they're getting lost wherever or not getting there through the mail, because as we've heard some of our colleagues say, we have sent out newsletter, that gets to the people three, four months later. And I too have had that problem. But I think it is a shame that our seniors have to go through this when they don't know, and then they get this thing, another letter that says that they have been disqualified and they can't apply no more for another three years. And then you all are thinking and wondering, you know, Hannah, well, you're going to pay this when you're sick, you've got to go to McGuire tomorrow and all of that. You don't need that extra worry or burden on you. So I think this city administration and this council needs to do something, that we need to have these phone calls, and everybody knows you can call my house, 233-7382. That is my home number, 233-7382. Because I want to hear from the others in my district that are calling me and calling others, saying that they've been calling the city and no return phone calls as far as them trying to find out what happened to their tax relief. How come they're not getting it? They don't need that worry on them. They have enough on them.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. And actually, the Director of Finance is here, the CAO of Finance, I guess, Ms. Judkins, and I think she would like to have a conversation with this gentleman, with Mr. Howard. Howard, this lady right here can help you.
She's going to help you.
With your tax...
Behind you.
And it's possible that you have tax relief and just have not quite gotten it.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure Ms. Judkins is going to take care of Mr. Howard. But there was a two-part piece to this. One was the tax and the response from the tax department. The other had to do with customer service, not just in the finance department, but in various other departments where people complain that they're being put on hold for inordinate amounts of time. Folks are being told, "We'll get back with you," and they're not getting back with them. And so, we've got a customer service issue. And you're right, folks who are elderly, A, don't have the wherewithal to manage all of that, and oftentimes, don't have the knowledge to handle that kind of encumbrance. And so, I think we're going to have to really ramp up and refocus on our customer service delivery in various departments. I hear from social services on a regular basis of people getting lost in that maze when you're talking about people with very delicate lives, under very precarious situations, and one ounce of discouragement, and often, they get blown... And one ounce of discouragement and often they get blown away. They don't try.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
I'm not finished.
But, Mr. Jewell.
I'll be finished in a second.
Okay, wrap it up. This is citizen comment, Mr. Jewell.
But this is an issue that needs to be addressed. And I don't need to address it later when the subject is before us. I think I've said enough. Mr. Marshall is here, and I think he'll address it. I just wanna give my number, along with Reva's. Anyone who needs additional help, you can reach me at my cell number, 332-3654. Now I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
Madam President, I understand, I understand. But when you have Mr. Hall who comes down here with his family and then he feels like he, and I'm glad that we have the administration that's gonna take him, but it's sad. And I have about some others in my district and probably all of the city that if they could find a place to park down here and get in here, they would be up here saying the same things that he's saying. It is a shame that they have another worry on them. He's been worried about this for over two weeks or three weeks, like some of the ones in my district. They can't sleep because they scared they gonna lose their home because they can't pay it. They don't need this extra worry or burden on them when they're sick as it is. But thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. And I will be. I would ask Finance to get back to us in terms of whether or not Mr. Howard already has tax relief. Thank you. All right, next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
The next speaker is Benoni Tony Amakuti.
Oh, excuse me, somebody left his script here. Is that yours? Please, don't count the time, please.
We won't start the clock till you start.
Thank you. My name, as we mentioned already, Benoni Tony Amakuti. I want to revisit an issue that emerged on 2011, that is November 14, 2011 meeting. A good administration has a monetary system. So decisions you take, you monitor it, so that you know the input and where you reach those implemented, those not implemented. Honorable Reverend Trammell asked Honorable Mayor Dwayne Jones about an outstanding amount of $23 million. The mayor could not clarify the issue. I wanted the administration to take note of it. If they have not clarified, they should let the people know. Two, during the hurricane-arriving time, Honorable Reverend Trammell sent me an email about her concern about her district. And I made a case to President of United States, His Excellency, Dr. Mr. President Barack Obama, my friend. And he declared the interior in here a disaster zone. I want to find out whether the city has received any related relief assistance from federal government and S.Y. Three, that federal government have made a case of homelessness a reality in this city and advised the dead president, my friend, His Excellency, Mr. Former President J.W. Bush, to build affordable housing units here. And he started it. And when President Barack Obama took over, I remade the case and he adopted the program. I wanted you to tell the people of City of Richmond, where are the buildings federal government, the president, and Congress are building for the people of Richmond? $2.4 million given to the homeless people for affordable housing and prevention of homelessness in the city. City Council approving 9-0. Nobody, where is the money? Who are the people who benefited from it? We wanted to know. Now, at your meeting on a, that was October 24, 2011, some people came, you gave them a word. They said they came to make a pancreatic cancer research. I wanted to know, who are the people? What kind of research are they making? So that it does not spread in the city of Richmond. Now, at Bogart King, I found out that they erected a new fountain machine that the sodas and the waters come to it. And the managers even there do not know how the sodas and the water enter into the machine. And they told me it's from City Hall. Some people say it's from Coca-Cola. How did they flow into it? And how did they enter the compartment? I drank a water and I became sick. I want City of Richmond to take note. Maybe that is why my friend, Honorable Mayor Bloomberg, was burning this type of thing in New York. Now, the other issue is about, you took a decision here. In fact, I've sent a related email already.
Your time is up.
I think you will deal with the email I sent to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
But I hope you read last week, Thursday, a free press. First page.
Thank you.
National security issue. I want you to be serious.
Thank you.
Protect life and property. God bless.
Appreciate it. Good to see you, as always. Okay, next speaker.
Madam President, those are all of tonight's speakers.
Yeah, I believe I have two more coming up on my list. One is Scott Berger. And then Michael Mack.
Yes, the next speaker is Scott Berger.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. My name is Scott Berger. I'm here to speak tonight about the water rates once again. Even if you use no water, residential customers will soon have to pay $49.40 in minimum monthly service charges. These minimum water sewer service charges are the highest in the entire country. Our local residents are up to, up in arms over the proposed $1 monthly service charge for the toll road. But where is the outrage over a monthly service charge approaching 50 times as large for necessity? If you are a grandma trying to make do on Social Security, annually paying the city $592 in minimum water sewer service charges will be a significant bite out of your check and a real financial burden. Low-income residents on a tight budget typically use little water but end up paying a disproportionately higher share of the city's water budget. Why does Richmond have the most backward and regressive water sewer rate schedule of any city in the United States? As an explanation, the Department of Utilities annually trots out the old rusted pipe smith. Even if Richmond's infrastructure and water pipes are in worse decay than any city in America, which we find hard to believe, why should Richmond finance the infrastructure repair through the most regressive means, the minimum service charge? The problem is that Richmond's water rate schedule is not only an unconscionable burden to senior citizens and low-income residents struggling to pay their bills, but it also offers little in financial incentive to use less water. The city does not need to hire consultant or to commission a study of its water sewer rates, because the solution to this problem is simple. All Richmond needs to do is adopt the rate schedule used by Henrico County, which buys water from Richmond. Henrico's minimum monthly water service charge is about a third of Richmond's, and they offer a volume use discount for customers who use 6 CCF or less of water. Richmond can receive the same total revenue from its waterworks by slashing the minimum monthly service charge, eliminating the high-volume discount, and charging a premium for customers using over 6 CCF of water sewer. By giving customers genuine incentives to conserve water, Richmond will reduce the need for future treatment facilities and reduce pollutants downstream. Social Security grandmas will have significantly more disposable income to make ends meet. Richmond residents will no longer have to dread the drip, drip, drip of the minimum monthly service charges. I will note that I've started a petition that has over 600 signatures and is growing daily. And, you know, I approached this issue here about five years ago. I thought we had taken care of it. And, you know, it's like that movie Groundhog Day, here I am again, about water rates. And I'm gonna continue on it. And I hope that council is prepared, council and the mayor are prepared to address it in a meaningful way rather than sloughing it off. This is not about volume. This is about the minimum service charges. And I don't wanna see in the press where this is being obfuscated. This is the issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Scott. Madam Vice President.
Yes, Ms. Trammell.
Scott, I wanna thank you for bringing this to our attention tonight and also all the hundreds and hundreds of emails that we've gotten. But I want everybody to know that I voted against it last year and I voted against it this year. And I think my colleagues might be looking at it a little bit different right now because this is outrageous. As you said, one month in the city of Richmond is like 80, 90, 80 to 90 dollars a month. And in Chesterfield for two months, it's like 80 dollars. It's not fair.
Especially when Chesterfield's buying water from Richmond.
Buying water from us.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Tyler.
Mr. Berger. Mr. Berger, before you leave, I think something that has not been reported in a large way is the fact that during the budget process, council members here, we sit in this chamber. And prior to all these emails, we talked with DPU with regards to this issue. And we made a request of Mr. Steidel, who's Director of DPU, to come back with a study with regards to how to rectify the situation. I think everyone on council five years ago when we were sitting here talked about the goal which we are all trying to achieve. And we felt that we were going to achieve that. It didn't occur for several reasons, which I'll let Mr. Steidel elaborate on. But at the end of the day, I think we, as a body, made a conscious decision during the budget process to request this process to go forward again so we can get it where it needs to be. I've not had one colleague come up to me and argue this point in the other direction. So I think it's a matter of timing more than anything else at this point.
Thank you. Just realized that this is something that's affecting your citizens.
Excuse me, wait a minute, just one second. Excuse me, we're not gonna have any back and forth here. If you wanna make a statement, that's fine.
Before you leave.
Mr. Jewell.
Mr. Berger.
Yes.
You have been steadfast in raising this question about this water rate. I'm curious to know, however, how you got your $49 figure? Is that a combined water charge, minimum water charge and sewer, minimum sewer charge? Or is it just water? How did you arrive at that highest rate in the country figure?
Well, five years ago, we had a contest and we, the Richmond Green Party actually put out a $100 reward to anyone could find a larger water sewer monthly minimum residential water rate, combined, water sewer. There might be someplace in Colorado, maybe, a small town somewhere. But honestly, I don't think that any city has anything approaching Richmond's.
And, Mr. Jewell, and thank you very much, Mr. Berger. We have Mr. Steidel here to speak to us. But, Mr. Jewell, if we wanna have, if we would like to have Mr. Berger come to a committee meeting and discuss this, that's fine. But it's not the order of this council to have a back and forth.
It is the order of this councilman to ask a speaker a question.
That's why we have a committee.
If I was making a statement, I could understand you cutting me off. But I'm asking a question that I think is gonna be foundational when Mr. Steidel gives us his comments.
I mean, you know, you can ask me whatever I want and I'll give you the best answer I can. But, you know, we're not supposed to have a back and forth and having Mr. Steidel come and give the comeback? I mean, you know, I have to question that. I wanna see.
Mr. Berger.
Response that's final.
Mr. Berger, you have a citizen comment. You have every opportunity to come to citizen comment. You have every opportunity to go to any one of the committee meetings that we have and have this back and forth discussion with council members.
Okay.
This is not the venue for it.
This is not a back and forth. I still have not clarified, is he counting a combined minimum water and sewer rate or just a minimum water rate?
If you look at the bills, it's combined sewer-water. If you look at the mayor's budget, it's combined sewer-water rate.
Combined sewer and water.
Minimum monthly residential rate.
That's all I need to know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Berger. And usually, I would just say, usually, we do not have somebody come to answer questions brought up in citizen comment. But, Mr. Berger, you have done an excellent job in educating the public on the water rates. So I think Mr. Steidel has a couple of comments to make in terms of how the city's gonna respond to this and how you're gonna respond to the council questions.
Yes, sir, thank you. Bob Steidel, Director of Utilities. Do wanna correct one thing. As of July 1st, you have eliminated the declining block rate. As of July 1st, everybody in every class pays the same rate. So that, that has been eliminated by this council. Five years ago, when you met, you did three things. You eliminated that block rate. You changed the winter quarter for the wastewater bills so that the customers would get more ability to use the winter quarter in their summer wastewater bills and not pay for their irrigation. And the third thing you did is you enacted a conservation rate that we use during voluntary and mandatory conservation. As we said to you in the two meetings in March, we understand that when we talk about median household income and we set our rates, there's people on the upper end and the lower end of the rate. So we said to you then, and we are in the process now, is we will bring to you a revised schedule of rates after we work with it with administration. We'll bring it to you in the Finance Committee in January so you can see what they are. There'll be an option of rates that'll be presented to you to be able to recover the revenue. And that's what you can use going forward with the citizen discussion for the upcoming biennial budget period and as we are going to set the rates for 14 and 15. When it comes to the counties, we can't compare each other. We're very, very different. In the wastewater side, we have flood walls and canals that we take care of where the counties don't. On the water side, we have reservoirs and large tanks that the counties don't have those same kind of tanks or those same numbers. The Richmond Water Plant was built in the 40s. The Henrico Water Plant was built in 2002. There's a lot of differences as to why things are the way they are. The things that are constant between all of us is what we pay for our people, power, and chemicals. And that's the commodity charge that we charge. The base charge, the charge that Mr. Berger was referring to, is how we recover the capital cost, the cost of the fire protection system, the cost of the combined sewer system. These are what we believe are good financial decisions to be made for the health and vitality of the city. But we'll look at different options and bring those to you, including changes in the base rate. We wanna look at lifeline rates. We wanna look at low-income rates. We wanna look at water conservation rates, inclining block rates. But we do this every five years because it makes sense to do it every five years as a way of letting the rates be properly absorbed throughout the time. We've raised the rate 60% on the commercial and the industrial class. That's a lot to ask during the last five years. And at this time, we're at the end of that process and we wanna reevaluate what we should be doing going forward. We have heard what you have said. We have heard what Mr. Berger, we've heard what other people have said. And we want to bring you back options. But at the same time, we also want to understand that water is very valuable. And we believe at this point, we still don't pay the full value of what we deliver every day. Every day you get water delivered to your house. Every day you get sewage taken away. You don't have to do anything about it. It comes and it goes. During the last power outage, everybody had water. During the power outage before that, everybody had water. It's something that we deliver to you every day that you do not have to take care of yourself. And we believe we bring you a quality rate.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jewell, you have a question?
Mr. Steidel.
Yes, you might have a couple of questions.
Thank you. I should hope that your reviews, I'm sure, are gonna be helpful. But I think we finally, it needs to come down to getting a complete comprehensive analysis on costs, because I'm not sure we're all counting apples and apples. Number one, we at least gotta start with a baseline of truth. Henrico County has its own water supply, does it not?
Its own water treatment plant.
Its own water treatment plant. Are they not billing their customers in the county?
I'm sorry, so saying.
Are they billing their customers in the county?
Yes, yes, of course.
They're no longer buying water from Richmond City?
No, they also buy water from Richmond. To be able to meet their demand, they buy water from, we wholesale water to them, they buy it and they resell it. And they also make their own water and then they sell that water too.
Exacto-mundo. And so there's part of the water they produce is self-generated from the county.
Correct, sir.
Another part is from the city. We don't know what that mix is. I have no idea what that ratio is. I have no idea what that ratio is. The other point, though, is that every year or thereabouts, we get a COLA, cost of living, it's not COLA, it's not, what am I trying to say? You guys remunerate the city with surplus funds or a percentage of funds surplus. Is that correct? What am I trying to call that?
We make a pilot payment.
Pilot, not the COLA. It's a pilot. And so, does that not have to be figured in? I mean, while we're charging X number per CCF, at the end of the day, there's a profit that's redistributed back to the city in terms of services. And so that should be a part of the analysis.
Well, that is set in charter as to how much the pilot payment is back to the city from, we operate like we were a for-profit business, as if we were a private entity. And it is allowable that the city can't expect to be receiving some funding back from, from the operation of the.
Again, if its profit is coming from the taxpayer or the rate payer, and therefore it should be calculated in a way that it addresses the actual rate at some point. And then, we need to compare apples and apples. Henrico County charges profits, I've heard ten thousand dollars per unit, per housing unit. They've got tap fees, highly expensive tap fees that they charge the homeowner or the builder. We don't do that in the city. And so if we're going to count the money, we need to count all the money.
We do charge a tap fee, sir.
Well, we don't charge like they charge.
That's correct.
I'm trying to tell you now. And so, and so between profits and extraordinarily high tap fees, all that should be a part of the calculus and that once and for all, we really need to get down to what the true costs are. I don't, I'm not prepared to go with Mr., with Mr. Berger's quote based on some contests. I'm not sure that we're comparing apples and apples even where you've got old cities like ours that's got water sewer, what do you call it, combined water and sewer, when other places, newer, younger, they don't have that problem. And so we need a full analysis of this problem and not just an off-handed comparison. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. You were talking about infrastructure and things like that. For the past five years, that's why our rates have been going up and up because we have to take care of the infrastructure and the pipes and all of that. Okay, we're, the taxpayers in the city of Richmond are the ones that use the water. They're the ones that's paying for that, but yet their Chesterfield is benefiting from it because they get our water. So they're not paying for the infrastructure in the city as we're paying, and they're benefiting from us when their water bills are cheaper for two months than what some of ours is. I mean, it's higher in one-month bills in the city than it is in Chesterfield. And that's what so many people are screaming and holling about.
Chesterfield County, under their contract with us, pays for the infrastructure in the city of Richmond that they use. So we bill them for their percentage share, their allocation of the infrastructure it takes us to take water and move it from the city of Richmond and distribute it into Chesterfield County. Again, we wholesale, so we provide them one commodity and it's up to them to decide how much they want to charge their own citizens for it.
I know, but it's pretty bad when you got somebody in Chesterfield that's got six children and a husband and wife and they have a big garden and they have cars and trucks that they wash once a week or every day, water the garden, and their water bill is cheaper than what ours is for one month in the city. Their water bill is every two months, not every month. And that's what we're having an issue with. I'd like to see what, what we charge them, Chesterfield and Henrico.
Yes, ma'am. And again, they're forty-year wholesale contracts that we have, we change it every year to reflect what the costs are in the current year and they're charged, they're charged the current cost just like we charge the city residents.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just had one question here. Mr. Steidel, you had indicated that the rates for the commercial users or the high-end users have gone up twenty percent.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent in the past five years, whereas for the residential customers, that's much less than that.
It's been nine percent.
I'm sorry?
Nine percent for the last five years.
So when we had this discussion five years ago, it was to transfer the cost from the high-end commercial users to, one, promote conservation, but two, relieve the burden of this minimum payment to the degree that we could. And I thought I heard you say in March that we had reached parity on that to where now we do have the option of, of actually lowering this payment. We didn't want to overnight have the water bills for the businesses in the city to go up three hundred percent. And so we're doing this as, as prudently as possible to, well, prudently in order not to cause a shock to the businesses. However, you're saying that this January, we will have the option of getting these numbers actually down.
Yes, sir.
The forty-nine dollars.
But by charter, I have to propose to you that we cover debt coverage for the utility of the bond covenants and to be able to get the equity and rate of return. I have to propose that to you. I have, I have no latitude in charter and in code, but I can give you options as to how to make that happen.
Okay, well, great. I think we, it's unfair to say that nothing has happened, I believe. And I appreciate that we're not getting there as fast as, as, as we wanted and the costs are going up and, but I, I believe that, as I said, that I'm not sure that it's completely fair to say that we haven't done anything. We have, as you said, transferred some of these costs. Do we still offer, and I understood that we were eliminating the, the higher use or the more you use, the more you save, that is no longer in the system.
As of July 1st of this year, that is now eliminated. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we brought that to parity now that there's, there is a, an incentive to conserve or certainly not an, not an incentive to continue to use more water. Okay, I just wanted to get all of that out there. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. And thank you. I'm sure I'll be speaking with you.
Yes, ma'am.
In the near future. Michael Mack. Mr. Clerk, was that our next speaker?
Yeah, the next speaker is Michael Mack.
Okay. All right, at this time, it doesn't look like Mr. Mack is here. I believe he's the last. At this time, Mr. Clerk, could we, do we have any motions to amend and continue?
Madam President, I have one motion to amend and continue, and that is for item number six, which is ordinance number twenty-twelve dash one oh three, to authorize a special use of thirteen fifteen Exchange Alley, thirteen twenty East Carey Street, fourteen and twenty South Fourteenth Streets, thirteen twenty-six East Carey Street, a portion of a private alley and a portion of Virginia Street for the purposes of waiving parking and loading requirements and permitting additional height and rooftop signage for the hotel usage. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. To amend ordinance twenty-twelve dash one oh three, page five, line one, after the letter L, insert the text, valet parking shall be provided for the hotel from seven AM to twelve AM. The approval of the city traffic engineer shall be required for the designation of the on-street waiting and loading area for such valet parking. The owner of the property shall ensure or shall cause the hotel operator to ensure that the operation of the hotel does not result in the blockage of traffic lanes on the streets abutting the property. Page five, line six, at the beginning of the line, insert the letter M. Page five, line eight, at the beginning of the line, delete the letter M and insert the letter N. Page five, line ten, at the beginning of the line, delete the letter N and insert the letter O. Page five, line fifteen, at the beginning of the line, delete the letter O and insert the letter P. Page six, line eight, at the beginning of the line, delete the letter P and insert the letter Q. I will need a motion to amend the paper as presented. Mr. Samuels, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on Councilman Samuel's motion to amend item number six, ordinance twenty-twelve dash one oh three.
Madam President, before we start the vote.
Excuse me, yes, sir. Mr. Tyler?
I need to let folks know that I have a conflict of interest on this, on this paper and will not be voting on it.
Okay, thank you.
On twelve, twenty-twelve one oh three.
Number six.
Number six.
Did you have a conflict on number five also?
Yes, ma'am, but I was going to wait to tell that a little later.
All right. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on Councilman Samuel's motion to amend item number six, ordinance twenty-twelve dash one oh three, to the July twenty-third meeting as stated. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
That paper has been amended and continued to July twenty-third, two thousand and twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, may we have the consent agenda?
The consent agenda items for this evening are as follows. Item three, ordinance number twenty-twelve dash one hundred, to conditionally rezone two hundred off Twentieth Street to the B five Central Business District. Item five, ordinance number twenty-twelve dash one oh two, to close the public use and travel, a portion of Virginia Street located between East Carey Street and Exchange Alley, conditioned upon the dedication to the city of the property for alley purposes and for an easement over the property for, for sidewalk purposes. Item seven, ordinance number twenty-twelve dash one oh seven, to amend the pay plan to include the classification of social services worker and social services worker supervisor. Item eight, ordinance number twenty-twelve dash one oh eight, to amend the pay plan to include the classification of surveillance officer and electronic monitoring program supervisor. Item nine, ordinance number twenty-twelve dash one thirty-nine, to dedicate, to declare the public necessity for the, for and authorize the acquisition of five oh one off Seventh Street and thirteen ten D, East Canal Street, for the purpose of public parking. Item ten, ordinance number twenty-twelve dash one forty, to declare that a public necessity exists and to authorize the acquisition of a temporary easement on twenty-eight nineteen Richmond-Henrico Turnpike for the purpose, for the public purpose of allowing, allowing temporary access and use of the property to construct Phase Two of the Canal Creek Bicycle and Pedestrian Trails. Item eleven, resolution number twenty-twelve dash R sixty-nine, to adopt the sustainability plan for the city. That concludes the consent agendas for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, are there any persons that wish to speak in favor of any item on the consent agenda? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Chris Dorsey. I'm going to be speaking in opposition of twenty-twelve dash one oh two, one oh three, one oh eight, and two thousand and twelve, R sixty-nine. Yeah, I've been, I've been up here and, and when prevented through incorrect carrying out of parliamentary procedure, been prevented to, to address the issues in five and six about conflicts of interest involving building contracts and, and people on city council and, and how pretty much all this is run through construction kickbacks. So that will take care of my opposition of five and six on the agenda, two thousand and twelve, one oh three, and one oh two. As far as number eight, there's not really much information given to include the classifications of surveillance officer and electronic monitoring program, but I'm opposed to any violations of the Fourth Amendment, and that includes most so-called electronic monitoring. And as I've stated before, it seems to be the people who are making these unconstitutional rules, if, if anybody needs to be electronically monitored, it seems to be those who are violating the Constitution and putting forward statutory law which violates the Constitution. And as far as sustainability, I don't know what the RVA green program for sustainability is, but I know about the, the environmental record of this city council and we talked about water and there was really no discussion at the city about waste being put into the James River and who knows how much that's going to cost the taxpayer to clean. But we have a damaged nuclear power plant that we're in the fallout zone for, and I don't hear anybody on city council addressing that. So I can assume their sustainability plan is something to do with greenwashing and, I don't know, taking people's rights away or destroying the planet while pretending to protect it. So anyways, like, like I usually say, I'm opposed to anything this body does and it really has no legitimate authority and is criminal in nature, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. All right, we'll bring it back to council for, is there anybody else in opposition? Okay, back to council for discussion.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Once again, I need to let everyone know that twelve, twenty-twelve dash one oh two, I have a conflict of interest and will be removing myself from the discussion and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Call the question, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel is voting on tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Oh, but aye for all except for the one I've so noted, I have a conflict.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those papers has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Clerk, at this time, do we have any expedited resolutions?
Yes, Madam President, we have two. We'll start with item, resolution number twenty-twelve dash R one hundred, to approve an expenditure in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars from the council district funds for the seventh district to make a gift to the Fan Free Clinic for its Sister Speak Camp program. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of that.
Madam Clerk, could we take both of those expedited papers together to vote on whether to expedite the two of them?
Sure.
Thanks.
The next is resolution number twenty-twelve dash R one zero one, that's to approve an expenditure in the amount of two thousand dollars from the council district funds for the seventh district to make a donation to the East District Family Resource Center for the annual Camp Diva Date with Dad Dinner and Dance to be held on March two thousand thirteen, held in March two thousand and thirteen. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of those papers. Councilwoman Newbill, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on Councilwoman Newbill's motion for expedited consideration of those papers as stated. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those papers are before you for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I think we'll take those two papers together. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of either of those papers? In opposition? Back to the council for discussion. Call the question, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on resolution number twenty-twelve dash R one oh one and resolution twenty-twelve dash R one Counsel is voting on resolution number 2012-R101 and resolution 2012-R100 as stated. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you. At this time, may we have the approval of the minutes?
The minutes for approval this evening are informal minutes, held on Monday, June 25th at 3:00 PM. The formal meeting held on June 25th at 6:00 PM. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Vice President Robertson, will you make that motion?
So, Madam Clerk?
Counsel is voting on Vice President Robertson's motion to approve the minutes as read. Mr. Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel's?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Jewell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
President Graziano?
Aye.
Those minutes has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we're gonna have reports and announcements. Start with Mr. Connor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, we gotta clean up. On the 21st, Saturday, the 21st, at 8:00 AM, we meet at 5515 Brace Lane. I'll give you a heads up a little bit, we're gonna be off in August, so we will not be a cleanup in August or a district meeting. The land use meeting meets on the 17th, that's Tuesday at 3:00. We're gonna be talking about the SPCA MOU that was mentioned in the paper today, we'll be having presentations on that, also on the fleet, and also emergency management will be there to talk about how we did this last time as compared to the things were going on with Irene. So I think they've done a lot of improvement, but I'm sure we got some things we need to work on as well. The district meeting is on the 24th, Tuesday, the 24th, starts at 5:00, at 5515 Brace Lane as well. Mrs. Turner's viewing, I will give you a little bit of information on that, because I know a lot of folks really don't have that. There'll be a viewing held on Friday, July 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Giles Funeral Home, located at 2100 Fairmount Avenue in Richmond. Telephone number there is 649-0377. Her service will be held on Saturday, July 14th, at 11:00 AM at Redeemer Lutheran Church, located at 9400 Red Bridge Road in northern Chesterfield County. The telephone number there is 272-7973.
Madam Vice President, Mr. Connor, before you go farther, the viewing on Friday at Giles Funeral Home, I think you said Giles?
Giles, Giles.
Giles Funeral Home.
It's Giles?
Giles, on Fairmount Avenue.
Yeah, on Fairmount Avenue.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Just to correct.
Okay. And the, and the service will be held on this, next Saturday, the 14th, 11:00 AM at Redeemer Lutheran Church, okay? And that's located at 9400 Red Bridge Road in northern Chesterfield. Telephone number there is 272-7973. And that concludes my, my.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Mr. Samuel's?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to keep this very brief. If you still have problems from the storm, be it debris that needs to be picked up, or if there is a problem with the tree, and there's a question if it's a city tree or somebody's residence's tree, give me a call and let me know. You can reach me at my office, 646-6532, or on my cell phone, 690-0898. You can also catch up with me on Facebook or via the Internet at charlesrsamuels.com. Secondly, the second district has been working on parking issues of all shapes and sizes, and we've been working hard on them, not only from the council standpoint, but also, I wanna thank the administration for the work they have put in, as well as the Fan District Association and the West Gray Street Association, who have hosted meetings and really put hours of work into finding new ways to help with the parking problem. And I'm excited that people are so willing to give of their time to work on these issues that benefit the whole community. I wanna thank the Fan District Association, the West Gray Street Association, and the administration for being easy to work with on a difficult problem.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel's. Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Madam President. I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't also say a little something about Ms. Turner, she was a wonderful woman, it's indeed a, a loss for the region as well, and it would be, she was a, a role model certainly for regional cooperation, sounds like she's doing that in her passing as well, having the viewing in the city of Richmond and having her funeral in Chesterfield County. She's just a wonderful woman, and we were glad to, and fortunate to, to know her. The next Health, Human Services, and Education Committee meeting is next Wednesday, July the 18th. We'll receive a report from the Department of Social Services on child protective services cases and get some information. We've requested some in-depth information regarding referrals to CPS and their ultimate outcome. We're gonna get a follow-up report on the computer issues. We heard from various Richmond Public School students about the availability of computers, both at the public library and in their schools, and we're gonna get an update on how that is progressing towards a more positive outcome. And finally, we're gonna get an update on homeless services with regard to the cooling and warming shelters and what will be the, the policy in trying to address those issues during this very hot summer. Again, as Mr. Samuel said, we're, please give us a call regarding any storm-related issues, particularly with removal of debris. I would suggest that in the beginning that you call 311 so that we will have record and be able to track this as to where a matter is, and I think we can expedite your situation if there's something in the system already and we're making a request from my office for a follow-up. So would ask that everyone call 311 first, and then we can certainly follow up if you're not getting the action that, that you deserve. This has been a massive undertaking, certainly from Dominion Power, and we appreciate their efforts, but also our own Department of Public Utilities and, and Public Works, so we thank them for our work. I'm gonna give you, the Dominion Power number is 866-366-4357, that is, if your, if your phone is working. If not, then if you could, if your mobile phone is working, that's the number to report a, a power outage. The next district meeting will be held the following Wednesday, July the 25th, at Pine Camp. That's at 4901 Old Brook Road at 6:00. Joining us will be the Richmond Police to discuss crime statistics and the upcoming National Night Out in the month of August. We'll also get a presentation on being prepared for a turn, a tornado and/or hurricane. And finally, we'll introduce the new director of the Northside Branch Library, and they will have a chance to speak with us and hear your concerns. The, excuse me, the current issue of the district newsletter has been mailed as of last week, so you should be receiving those. If you have not received one and you would like to do so, please call Lisa Towns at 646-6055 if you can get a copy to you and make sure that our database is, is updated. We're also, excuse me, we also send out periodic emails, keeping you up to date on information both within the city and, excuse me, within the district and the city as a whole. If you want to be included on those announcements, please call Ms. Towns. Again, her number is 646-6055, or you can email her at crit, excuse me, at lisa.towns, T-O-W-N-E-S, at richmondgov.com. And of course, your email information will be kept confidential. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Mr. Jewell?
Oh, did a switcheroo tonight.
You can never know which way I'm going, Mr. Jewell.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I, I just wanna say, first of all, that, that, to the public, that I'm just overwhelmed with joy that we got a better response after this awful storm this, this last time around, not only from Dominion but from the city, because that's small comfort to someone who still has a, a tree sitting on their house. And so, but the, the Dominion was extremely responsive. The city was very quick at removing blockage from the streets, and I thought this was a heck of a, heck of a response. During the hurricane, we had four, five, six days warning. We knew it was coming. I don't think anybody knew this was coming. And so, but that the response was as good as it was, it was amazing. I am having a district meeting, 5th District meeting tomorrow night, tomorrow, Tuesday night at 6:00 PM. We alternate on each side of the river, since the 5th District sort of brackets both sides of the river. We'll be meeting at Southside Plaza, at the Southside Community Center. And we hope to have our Richmond Police Officers there to give us a report from the 2nd and the 3rd precincts, as well as Public Works would be there. Anyone who still has outstanding storm-related issues, feel free to come and let us know what they are, and let's see if we can get you some help immediately. And there was, oh, there is roadwork going on, paving going on in Maymount Neighborhood. It looks a little weird. Anyone having problems trying to understand what's going on over there, please bring your concern to that meeting. I understand that just last week, week before last, the tax assessment notices went out. We send notices twice a year now, not just once a year, and I urge usually as a rule of thumb, if your assessment has unexplainably increased 7% or more, then you may wanna consider an appeal. Please call our offices if that's the case, if you need help. Ms. Young's number is 646-5724 here at the office, or you can reach me by cell at 332-3654. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Ms. Newbill?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to first just simply say thank you to Dominion Power and all of the city agencies, Department of Public Works, DPU, EMS Administration, and others who worked long hours to speedily restore the recent storm-related power outage throughout our city. And I know that there are still a few out, but they're working diligently to have those come back on. This is an early announcement, we will not have a district meeting in the month of July, but I want to early invite all of the residents of the 7th District to come out to our district-wide National Night Out Celebration on Tuesday, August 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, at 25th and Fairmount Avenues. This is a district-wide National Night Out Celebration that civic associations and other organizations throughout the district have been working diligently on to ensure that it's an extraordinary event, providing food, fun, entertainment, as well as information, public safety, health, and community resource information for all. So again, that will be a district-wide, and last year it was one of the largest in the city with all, not all, but the good number of the civic associations coming together. And that will be Tuesday, August 7th, from 8, 5:00 to 8:00 PM at 25th and Fairmount Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newbill. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, the Richmond Times Dispatch is right, silence is not golden. Mr. Mayor, in speaking as chairperson of public safety, I would like to know who held up the promotion of our Richmond Police Officers and why. Did you know that this hurts the morale of our entire police force, and now this has become a public safety issue? Let's remember that promotions are an important part of attracting and maintaining good qualified police officers in our city. These promotions are the responsibility of our police chief, our police chief, Brian Norwood, and no one else, no one else, including you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to have an answer to my questions at my next public safety meeting on Monday, July the 16th. Thank you. Last Friday and Saturday, we were hit hard with a storm, bad storms, especially in our 8th District, and I know some other districts got hit pretty hard, too. I'd like to thank Dr. Carolyn Graham, Dr. Anthony McLean, Tammy Harley, and Mr. Marshall for their phone, for their phone calls and their emails. I'd also like to thank Kristy Morton from the Governor's Office, who had emailed me, and I forwarded email to Lou Ali, who forwarded it to my colleagues to let them know how bad the storm was. As Marty Jewell has said and some of my colleagues, yes, this was a wake-up, I think, from the last storm that we had. Things went a lot smoothly this time because we were in touch with some of the key people like Anthony McLean and Dr. Carolyn Graham. I wanna thank them for all the emails and thank them for taking the time to call me personally, and Mr. Marshall and Tammy Harley for all that they did. I know this was very difficult for our seniors, our children, and the adults without power for over six days, especially over there on Albany Avenue in the Blackwell area, and the seniors over there at the Forest Haven Apartments, who had no, no air conditioning. I think one side did, the other side didn't, so that was pretty, pretty rough for those seniors. Also, I wanna thank Keith Andes and Chip Decker for returning my phone call when I found it Sunday afternoon from Anthony McLean and Dr. Carolyn Graham that there was gonna be ice delivered at Station, let me see, Station 22 and Station 13. I was kinda upset when I made the phone calls to them because I did not understand why Station 21, Fire Station 21 on Jefferson Davis was not gonna receive the ice. After some phone calls that Keith Andes and Chip Decker made, Nancy Hall, Laura Numley, and Derek Andes, they were able to make this happen. At Station 21, we were able to get ice by 12:00 o'clock Monday. And with that, the total amounts that we had at Fire Station 13, which is at 411 East Commerce Road, there was a total of, let me see, 1,658 bags that was delivered of ice to those residents over there. And I'd like to thank those firefighters at Station 13 who helped load up our cars, our vehicles. Also, they loaded up one of the fire trucks and took ice over there after 10:00 PM to Albany Avenue. I wanna thank them for that. Fire Station 22, at 2420 Broad Rock Boulevard, total bags, 1,757 bags. They also helped load up people's cars so that they could have the ice. Fire Station 21, which is 2505 Jefferson Davis Highway, totaled bags, 1,162 bags. So that was a total for all three fire stations, 4,577 bags. I'd like to thank Dominion Power and the Red Cross that was able to get these track and trailers over there with the ice, and also the ice was delivered over there to 21 in coolers because they could not get the, the track and trailer over there. But again, this is us working together, and as I have said many, many times, who knows our districts better than a councilperson that is representing that district? So thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I know those seniors were very appreciative for the fire department, police working together, Major Steve Drew calling to check on the residents and the seniors, our captain from 2nd, Harvey Powers, Captain Civil Alamin from 4th, with Lieutenant John Beasley, Lieutenant Angie Green, who was out there in the districts helping people. So I say thank you all for all your hard work. And also, I know some people say, what, why do they need ice? Well, you know what? The seniors taught me something. You know what they were doing with the ice? They had little pans. They would take the ice, because most of them had to sit outside because it was so hot in the, in the. because it was so hot in the apartments, all that, you couldn't stand it. They put the ice in a pan so they could put their feet in it to cool their body down. So that's why we need ice. And also, people were telling me if they would have had ice that Saturday, maybe some of them could have had their coolers ready and put the ice in it so they could have saved some of their food and some of their medicine. So that's why it's important to have the ice maybe delivered right away as soon as possible. Because people don't realize, the city of Richmond does not reimburse people for their food, and neither does Dominion Power. You must have homeowner's insurance or renter's insurance to get reimbursed for your food. Our next meeting is going to be July 19th, that's the 3rd Thursday, July 19th, at the Satellite. We're going to have Linda Brody Myers there to speak about some senior programs and also GRTC. Also, Cor Dickerson's going to be there to talk to us about the 311 and 211. And also, we're going to see if we can get Mark Bridgman there to talk to us about some coded enforcement issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell.
Yes, my fire, I forgot.
Okay, don't forget that, don't forget that.
I'm so sorry. Yes. This right here, and let me, yeah, I know, no. Okay, this right here is your free smoke alarm. I have been telling so many people at all the meetings, if you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, these firefighters will come to your house. They will install the smoke alarm for you for free. And if the smoke alarm is beeping, call them or go to the nearest fire station. They will set up an appointment, they'll come to your house, your apartment, and they will put this up for you. Or they'll give you a battery to go, they'll put the battery in your smoke alarm. All you got to do is make that call, 646-1526. These smoke alarms do save your life. They save your home, they save your pets. And just remember, if there's a fire, get out as soon as possible. Let those firefighters, those men and women, put the fire because they know how to do their job. And again, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Mr. Tyler.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, July 24th, at 6:30 PM at Mary Munford, there'll be a 1st District meeting. And at that meeting, I'm hoping to have two conversations, and I'm trying to get folks from the city administration to join in these conversations. The first one is City Stadium, and with regards to the redskin development, to see what, what's going on, if the stadium is going to be used, how would it would be used, and what impact it would have on the, on the nearby community. The second one is, is that we have a special use permit in the 1st District at the Corner of Liberty and Grove. And it's a BP station that's being looked at to be converted to a mixed-use project. And I'm hoping that we will have someone from Planning Development in review to join me as we discuss this project. Again, the meeting's at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, July 24th, at Mary Munford. In closing, I want to say that there are many times people come up to you and they, they look at you and they say, why are you on, why are you on City Council? And I can't tell folks the number of times because of folks like Mrs. Ruby Turner. She, five and a half years ago, I had the pleasure of meeting her for the first time, sitting in that seat on the front row. And I hope one day we'll put a plaque to recognize that seat in her behalf. She was such an inspiration. She soft voice, but boy, did she carry a big message in a big way. And I just wish we had 20 of her sitting in this community. I have never met someone so inspirational and, and so full of life. I tell folks that I've heard many people talk about the witnessing to the light, and I must say, she did witness to the light. And it's a light that I will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to, first of all, echo what Mr. Tyler has just said about Mrs. Ruby Turner. It's amazing how many people I meet that always ask me, who is that lady that sits there, you know, a TV audience that sit at home and watches? And they always ask about her, and they always ask with a sense of wonder and amazement. Because even just from the view of those that see her on TV, they sense the passion that she has for what's going on in city government and her dedication and, and commitment. So it's always been a pleasure for me to tell people the little that I have known about Ms. Turner. And certainly, she's going to be missed, and she was missed tonight. You can always hear her say "God" distinctly when we say the Pledge of Allegiance. And it speaks to her faith, and it speaks to her commitment to, to the works that she has done. So we appreciate the time that she was with us, and we send our regards to the family. For the district, I have mentioned at the last couple of meetings that we are having a foreclosure prevention workshop. That will be this week, Thursday, July 12th, is going to be held at the Bird Park Roundhouse from 6:30 to 8:00. We've sent the brochure to all of my colleagues and asked if their liaisons would send them out. We want to make sure that we get this information out. We still have a significant, large number of persons that, in stages of foreclosure, or have concerns about whether or not they can make their mortgage payments. There are wonderful services that are out there that can help people. And so it's very important that we get the message out, to have people to come. There will be opportunities where they can get questions answered. And if they want to talk specifically about their personal situation, and we know they would want to share that in a public meeting, there will be counselors there from Housing Opportunities Made Equal and other partners that are in this work that can talk to people one-on-one and, and address their concerns. So I really want to stress the significance of that. We also will be talking about other issues as it relates to foreclosures, how it's impacting real estate values in the city, what are the resale values, and their impact that we anticipate that they will have as it relates to assessment values. We also will be providing opportunities for tenants because in lots of cases, the persons who live in rental housing that may be foreclosed on may not get that notice because it goes to the property owner. And so they are caught off guard when the property that they are living in is foreclosed. But there are certain laws and certain things that they can take into account to protect them as it relates to their, their rents and their places where they're living. So we are asking not only for the homeowners, but also tenants to come out and find out this information as it relates to foreclosure and foreclosure prevention in the city of Richmond. So that's Thursday night again, July 12th, 6:30 to 8:00 at the Bird Park Roundhouse, 800 South Davis Street. It's right in the middle of Bird Park. Also, we are having, because of this meeting, I am not going to be having a town meeting, which would have normally been held on Saturday. So there will not be a town meeting for the 6th District for the month of July. We're asking everyone to come to the foreclosure prevention meeting that will be held on Thursday night. And I'm also happy to announce that the Baden Heights Community Association is reconvening. They have not had a civic association organization in operation for some time. If you all remember Al Ralph Harris that was with us, did a marvelous job leading the civic association. And so that's been quite a void. But they have reconvened, and they will be having their first meeting on Wednesday, July 18th, 6:30 to 7:30, at Baden Heights Community Association Meeting at the Police Academy Building, 800, no, I'm sorry, at the Partnership for Families on North Side, 800 West Graham Road. And also, I am happy to announce that as a part of the introductory papers that will be made tonight, we have spent, we've had two meetings with stakeholders, homeowners, developers, other activist groups that are interested in affordable housing. We have legislation that will be introduced tonight, and we hope that you would take time to review that and make sure that we can move forward with putting the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in place, as well as there's a piece of legislation on electric structures that I would like for you all to also pay close attention to. And likewise, like my colleagues have said, if there's debris that has not been picked up in the 6th District, please call our office, 646-7964. Let us know where it is and the address. I want to thank Dominion and the city for the wonderful job that they have done and ask the citizens to continue to work with us and let us know where there may be still debris that needs to be picked up in the district. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Madam President, if I could just add one quick thing here. I forgot to mention.
Now we are going to have, we've had all the announcements except for mine. But now we're going to go to the PS announcements. But before UPS, UPS over there.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, thank you. You see, if you go over and ask nicely, you get to go first.
Okay. Duly noted.
Duly noted. And I, in all seriousness, I forgot to mention the Richmond City Council, GRTC, and Transit Study Task Force is holding a meeting this Thursday at 4:00, and it's 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And it will be at Richmond Main Street Station in the Office of Economic Development on the 3rd floor in the large conference room. We will be receiving reports from the subcommittees that have been working on this task force for the last month with regards to their ideas and concepts. So I look forward to anyone joining us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. The PS over here is next, and then you get a PS. Go ahead, Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, President Graziano. I just wanted to, to thank personally Charlotte Davis over at Lincoln Muse Apartments for giving me a call and letting me know about their power outage. And I want to thank the Better Housing Coalition for what they did of creating a cooling shelter, bringing a generator over there, and the Richmond Police for bringing some lights over there, attempting to in a, in a difficult situation with the storm. So I'd be remiss if I didn't thank those folks for contacting me and for their good work in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Ms. Trammell, on the PS mode.
Thank you, Madam President. I, too, wanted to say something about Mrs. Ruby Turner because I also served on a board with her with Citizens Against Gun Violence. And she's definitely going to be missed because she worked so well with the community, with the police, everywhere, state police, Prince George, every, I mean, just everywhere, Chesterfield, here, my God, City. She's going to definitely be missed because she just, as Bruce said, when you saw her sitting in an audience, she just had a glow about her, and you could just feel that she's a wonderful person. And like I said, I can remember some of the phone calls that we had in reference to City Council and to the city, the district, and things like that. You could call Ruby anytime, and she always had good advice. And she was always, always up and honest with you, no matter what. She would always be honest with you. So she's going to definitely be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. I just have a couple of announcements along with everyone else. And very sorry about the passing of Mrs. Ruby Turner, and certainly miss seeing, seeing her sitting in her favorite spot, right in front of council. Just so everybody knows, we are sending a letter to her family expressing the condolences of council. And just she will be missed by all of us. The other thing that I want to mention, we did have those power outages and storms, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, Monday. I just want to thank Tuesday, I just want to thank Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I just want to thank all of the Dominion workers and the city workers who were out. I know Dominion, they had workers working 12, 14-hour shifts. And our city workers were out there also. And I just want to thank all those people who were doing their job, trying to get us, our roads open and our lights back on. So, thank you. And with that, oh, and also, don't forget the farmer's market, Forest Hill Park. Tomatoes are in, corn is in, peppers are in, and there's music, tacos, eat, and just have a good time. At this time, I would like to have the introduction of the papers. Madam Clark.
Mr. Clark. Yes, Madam President, the introductory papers for this evening are as follows. Ordinance Number 2012-145 to authorize the CAO to execute an amendment to project development and administration agreement between the city and the Virginia Department of Transportation for the purpose of providing additional funding for the Hull Street Passenger Station project. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, July 17th. Council's public hearing, July 23rd. Ordinance 2012-146 to authorize the CAO to accept $135,000 from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the purpose of making improvements to the former Hull Street Station located at the intersection of 1st Street and Hull Street. Council's Planning Commission, July 16th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance 2012-145 to authorize the CAO to execute a supplemental agreement between the city and the Old Dominion Chapter National Railroad Historic Society for the purpose of modifying the party agreement to provide an additional $135,000 to Virginia Department of Transportation funding for the Hull Street Passenger Station project. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, July 16th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance 2012-148 to authorize the CAO to execute the Economic Development First Revolving Loan tranche-to-corporation agreement between the city and the Economic Development Authority for the city of Richmond for the purpose of administering a loan program fund with the Section 108 loan of $10,125,000 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, July 19th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-149 to authorize the CAO to accept $131,296.55 from the State Board of Election for the purpose of reimbursing the city for costs incurred in conducting the 2012 Republican Party Presidential Primary Election. Council's Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, July 19th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-150 to authorize the CAO to execute a lease of property by the city of Richmond Agreement between the city, as Lee Sore and Lee Cement Company LLC, as Lee C., for the purpose of allowing Lee Cement Company LLC to use the property known as 311 Water Street and 3111 Water Street as a storage and distribution facility for cement products. Council's Land Use, Housing, and Transportation Standing Committee, July 17th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-151 to amend Ordinance 2012-54-69, which adopted the general fund budget for FY1213 and made appropriations pursuant unto to transfer funds in the amount of $7,160,000 from the non-departmental agency Rainy Day Unassigned General Fund Balance Line item, and to appropriate $7 million to the finance agency risk management program for the purpose of consummating the proposed resolution in the Rogers versus City of Richmond case by mutual agreement authorized by Resolution 2012-R80-87 to appropriate $160,000 to the police agency for the purpose of making other arrangements related to overtime compensation for police officers. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-152 to declare a public necessity for and to authorize acquisition of property identified as a project area and a certain gift and dedication of real property and development agreement between Gables Hill LLC Venture Richmond, Inc., and the city of Richmond, and Dominion Resources, Inc., currently owned by Gamble Hills LLC, and to be conveyed to Venture Richmond pursuant to such agreement for a purchase price not to exceed $916,640 for public right-of-way purposes. Council's Planning Commission, July 16th. Council's Land Use Standing Committee, July 17th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-153 to authorize the CAO for and on behalf of the city of Richmond to execute a gift of dedication of real property and development agreement between Gamble Hills LLC Venture Richmond, Inc., and the city of Richmond, and Dominion Resources. Hills LLC Venture Richmond, Inc., and the city of Richmond, and Dominion Resources Services, Inc., for the purpose of the construction of the Second Street Connector Road together with sidewalks and utilities between South Second Street and Trediger Street. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, July 17th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-154 to name the roads within the city cemeteries known as Maury-Maymont, Olivet Cemetery, Oakwood Cemetery, Riverview Cemetery, and Shackle Hill Cemetery as set forth in the attached report entitled Cemetery Street Name Programs. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, July 17th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-155 to repeal Chapter 59, Article 6, Division 2 of the city code consisting of Section 58-111 through 58-115, and concerning the Affordable Housing Trust Oversight Board and to amend and reordain the city code 58-101, 102, 103, 121, 122, and 123 concerning the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purpose of abolishing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Oversight Board, modifying certain definitions, modifying the purpose of expenditures from the funds, modifying the eligibility criteria for application for a loan or grant from the fund, and reassessing the powers and duties of the Department of Economic and Community Development to the chief administrative officer or the designee thereof. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, July 17th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Ordinance Number 2012-156 to establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board to provide advice and recommendations to the council and the mayor concerning the appropriate regulations for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, July 12th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Resolution Number 2012-R102 to dispense with the regular meetings of council during the month of August 2012. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Resolution Number 2012-R103 to approve the expenditure in the amount of $1,456.04 from the council district funds for the Second District to pay the Department of Information Technology for the printing and mailing of the newsletter to Second District residents. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. And Resolution Number 2012-R104 to designate 718 East Franklin Street and 712 North Eighth Street as a revitalization area pursuant to the Virginia Code. Council's Land Use, Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, July 17th. Council's public hearing date, July 23rd. Madam President, that is all of the new legislation that I have for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, the meeting is adjourned.
And we have run just about, let's see, two hours and 15 minutes from the time we got started. Got started tonight at 6:05, had the appointments and reappointments, followed by awards and presentations. And one of the awards going to a lady who was taken from us this past week, was Ruby Turner. And we heard many, many accolades being said about her from the various council members, and all well-deserved, quite a lady, and she definitely will be missed. I'll miss seeing that smiling face there in the front row at every Richmond City Council meeting. I got to the agenda review, then the regular agenda, only one item on the regular agenda, and that was to conditionally rezone 5817 Bliley Road, 5619, and 5625 Forest Hill, 1664 Limerick, and 1664 A Limerick Drive from R3 Single Family to R6 Single Family Attached. That took about 10 minutes. That was approved by unanimous vote. Got to citizens' comment period, quite interesting citizen comment period tonight, if you're watching. Then we got through amendments and continuances of papers. The consent agenda came along, that only took, oh, just a couple of minutes. Let's see, we had about eight minutes for the consent agenda before it was unanimously approved. On that, there was one paper, if you'll notice, Councilman Tyler excused himself of the one paper, abstained because he had a conflict of interest in that one. We got to the expedited consideration, two papers, two minutes, that was approved, and then the reports from council members, the introduction of papers, and at 20 minutes past eight-hour time, two hours and 15 minutes after we started, we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be the 23rd of July. Then, as you heard the paper being introduced, they will vote on that meeting to do away with the August meetings, which has been traditional except for one year, many years back, but we'll get into that another time. So we will see you again on the 23rd of July. And for gavel to gavel, I'm Dick Harmon. Good night.